Good evening, everyone. I'll call a meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings in several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hoffman, would you read our community prayer?
Sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. Before we get started this evening, Ms. Bogart has asked me to let everyone know that she had a conflict with another meeting, and she'll be here as soon as she's able. All right. The first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. Are there many members of the public who would like to address the board? Ma'am, right there, if you'd like to step up to the microphone. If you could just give her your name and address, please.
My name is Sharon Churchill, and I live at 41 South Main Street.
Thank you.
And I'm here today, and I'm sure you probably suspect, I'm here about the fair and the traffic problems. In the last few years, we've seen a tremendous increase in the traffic and the cars and the congestion. Many weekends, we can't get out of our driveway. We can't get back in. It took me, my daughter-in-law had had surgery, was in a lot of pain. It took me over an hour to get from the center to my house, which usually would take three minutes. Then, that was, you know, last year. And last year, it continued to get worse, but this year, it is over the top. Three Saturdays ago, I had a truck coming to do a major project. They got stuck on Lakeview Street. They were there an hour, and they were told it would be another hour. It is about a two-minute drive from Lakeview to my house. He said, "I'm sorry, we can't wait, ma'am. It's too long." They canceled. The project didn't get done. These things are annoyances, and they're disruptive to life, but Saturday was over the top. My son and his wife live next to me. They live at 43, and I'm at 41. We went out there, and cars were coming from every direction, pulling up on our lawns, in our driveway. We nicely asked them to move, said, "This is private property. You can't park here." Some people very politely complied, but unfortunately, many of them chose to disregard our wishes, pulled up on the lawn, parked their cars, and headed to the park. Some of them were obnoxious, were swearing and yelling at us. I had found my rubbish barrel filled with nips, which is well into my property. They had no business coming on my land. And we did everything we could. We stood out there waving and yelling at the people finally to leave, and we couldn't. We couldn't control it. It was like an invasion. And my son nailed it when he said to me that today, they had a sense of entitlement. "Your town hosts the fair, so we have a right to park in your yard." And we felt helpless in it. And some of them were very nice families with young children, and they were fine. But I have to be honest, many of them, I just didn't want them near my house. They just didn't seem like they were the kind of people we would find in Carver. And this was, you know, disturbing to all of us. We didn't know what to do. We know the police are overwhelmed by it, because numerically, I guess about 10,000 people came into town. So we talked about, we decided what to do. I called King Richard's Fair, and I asked them, I had to leave a message. They did call me back, and I asked them how many people went to the fair on Saturday and Sunday, and how many cars their parking lot can hold. Their representative was very courteous but very smooth. He would not commit or answer any question. He gave me an email address. He said, "You can send your questions to this address. You may get the information." And that was it. He was no help. And I spoke to the chief of police, who was wonderfully responsive and took time and listened to me, and agreed with everything I was telling him. And I really appreciated that, and I want to make sure I give a shout out to that, because he really took a good amount of time to listen to my complaints. We are concerned for ourselves, but overwhelmingly, a week ago, they had the people parking in Ederville, and they didn't want to wait for the buses, so they walked up Main Street. There was a sea of humanity walking right up the street in the middle, pushing baby carriages, everything. You couldn't get out of your driveway, but I was so afraid for those kids, so afraid. I called the police station. I said, "This is a tragedy waiting to happen. Something has to be done." And they agreed, you know, that this is just out of control. And so that's what we're here for. We are also concerned, my son raised the issue that the cars were parked on both sides of 58, and Route 58 is divided into three lanes. This weekend, it would have been impossible for an ambulance or a fire truck to get down South Carver if someone was in need. It has just created, it's just, you can see it. You can see what's going to happen. It's going to be a disaster. Something terrible is going to happen. So we're bringing this to you, people. We know you have the hand on the helm and that you can direct the course that we take to deal with this issue. I'm not terribly optimistic that the fair is going to be very helpful after the response I got, but these are our concerns.
We thank you, and just so you and the people at home know, because I have received many messages from people, and I'm sure everyone on the board has, we do have an item scheduled on our next Select Board meeting, which is on November 1st regarding this specific item. We have the police chief coming in, and there may be others as well. So just so you know, this is, got to be taken care of.
It does. It really does. You know, the co-character of this town is peaceful, family-oriented, pastoral. This comes into town, it's like an invasion. It's so against everything we are. So, okay, thank you for listening.
Again, so you and everyone knows, November 1st.
Yes, same Tuesday night, 6 o'clock.
Right here.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Sir?
Even. I'm Derek Churchill. I'm at 43 South Main Street. This is my mother you just heard from. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself and my wife Jennifer, who also lives there. Thank you for taking the time and making time to hear us on this issue. We've lived here, well, practically our whole lives, and I've lived at 43 now, 43 South Main Street, for almost 19 years. And to echo what you've already heard from my mother, the traffic has just ramped up at a rate that's just remarkable. And it's following, frankly, a national trend. As we saw in 2020, as soon as we hit that summer in 2020, any outdoor spaces were just overwhelmed with people. I'm a backpacker, so I'm constantly up in the north, especially at Acadia National Park, other places. There were just streams of people everywhere. So we're not alone in dealing with that wanting-to-get-outdoor factor, but the response in dealing with that has been very different from the people running the fair versus what I've seen in other places. One of the examples I'd like to share is, as I mentioned, I go to Acadia National Park quite a bit. And one of the things they've had advantage, if you've ever been up there, they have an auto road that goes to the top of Cadillac Mountain. And like we are experiencing, they had an explosion of people. And so what they did was they put in a timed access, where you actually had to go online, register for a specific time to show up, get a little ticket, and if you weren't in that two-hour window, you didn't go in. All right? And it's really helped the traffic flow there. I'm not saying that's exactly the thing we do. One of the contrasts I want to paint is the response to the influx of people. You had an observed issue, and there was an action taken to address it. You've seen some of the traffic change here, but frankly, we haven't really seen a proactive measure from the fair, from managing their ticket system. It's just open-ended dates. People can show up whenever they can. One of the things we're very concerned about this coming weekend, it's, we went on the website after this weekend to try and learn a little bit more about how the fair operates, and it was the call-out, it's the last weekend. Tickets are non-refundable. If you don't show up, you're going to lose that money. So frankly, we're expecting a mob to come into town this weekend, a real influx. I want to give credit where credit's due. The third lane did help. We have seen that have a bit of help. The, you know, to a point. It would work, you know. I think it delayed the buildup in traffic to a degree, but that third lane ends right in front of our property, right in front of our house. So we get to see this all play out in real time, and the traffic starts to build up there. And, you know, frankly, from my perspective, if we really want that to be effective, that should be extended all the way down to where Route 58 connects with Tremont Street, so that you have that through lane running all the way through. You know, the other thing that you've already heard is, it's not the new issue, but what we've come to have to adapt to is, if you live in that part of town for almost two months of the year, you basically either, you have to adjust your life to fair traffic. And on Saturdays and Sundays, you have a choice. You're either trapped in your house all day, or you're out all day. It's one or the other, unless you get, run out early in the morning, hit all your appointments, and get back early in the morning, but then you're at the house all day. So it's a right of access, and I think everybody would agree here. That's one of our pretty much guaranteed rights. You know, kind of a basic right as U.S. citizens, right? In particular, here in residents of Carver. And that's one of the things we're hoping that this governing body looks to solve is, how do we maintain that right, you know, freedom of movement? And that's really, I don't think, an outrageous expectation from where we live, right? The other thing you heard, you know, again, the parking situation, it really was a mob mentality. It was, you know, there was this expectation. In fact, somebody even said to me, one of the people said, "Well, it's on the town east, so we can park here." There was that expectation that was said to me. And thankfully, so what the difference between where I live, my mother lives, my house is right on the street. My mother's house is set 700 feet back, so you don't actually see the house. Thankfully, I got there in time, but people were actually parking across her driveway, were actually trying to park, double and triple park into a space in the front of her property there. If I hadn't got there in time, they would have parked across the driveway, and she would have had no way to get out. All right? So the result was, we actually had to park our car at the end of the driveway for a while. Thankfully, the town workers loaned us a cone, and we put some barrels out there to try to just, you know, mark it off here. Couple of questions I'm hoping the board will consider. We'll be back in a couple of weeks. Is what are our options? Frankly, you know, we heard a rough number of about 10,000 people come to town. That's almost doubling the size of the town in a given day. From our perspective, the fair has outgrown the ability for this town to host it. We think this town needs to start looking at exit strategies and, you know, for whatever means we have here. You know, we've given a long run. I think this town's been a really good community partner there, and really gone out of its way to adapt and so forth. And we know there's a tax benefit, but, you know, there's, we need to balance that against the impact from people living here. And, you know, the final point I want to roll into that is, balance that against the impact of the public safety. Yes, you know, you heard that, you know, infants, you know, mothers rolling down strollers, mothers and fathers rolling down strollers on Main Street, South Main Street. And as you're well aware, that part of South Main Street or Main Street doesn't have a sidewalk, so they're rolling down on the street. And on any given day not fair, it's a very busy day. I wouldn't want to put a stroller down there any other day. But my chief concern really is the emergency services. They're, even without the parking on the side of the road last Saturday, they're, you know, emergency services to be able to get to our homes, and I'm really concerned about ambulances, if we had an emergency call or a fire department. There's no way you'd get there in a timely fashion when the traffic starts building up the way it does, let alone that city. So that's how I'm just.
And I appreciate all your comments. We do try to keep citizens' participation to a three- or four-minute discussion, so believe me, we want you to get, we know this is a serious concern, and we want you to get all your points out.
Thank you very much.
Again, we do plan on addressing this at our next meeting.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Well, I don't have to address it, but I'm coming for that meeting, because my philosophy is they should come off at 495, go through South Carver, and you better talk to Mr. Well, help double, I was going.
Everyone is welcome.
So that would be my game, to start interacting with him and let him use that parking lot.
Joanna, if you want to, I appreciate your comments, but the people at home can't hear you, so do you want to come up to the microphone? Or would you like to?
I just need to get.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay. I've been in this town 50 years, so I guess I know a lot of things that have happened. My point, and I've talked to my neighbor about it. I was saying during the week, I think it was, I had gone, or Friday when it was open. It was the long weekend, and I was in Dunkin' Donuts, and there was no donuts. And my grandkids were crying in the car, because there's no donuts. They come and eat all the donuts. So I talked them into something else, and we sat down. And before you know it, there was all these people coming in with these gowns and dresses and boobs hanging out. And my grandkids are looking at them, you know, and they're saying, my grandkids are eight and five, by the way. They, the people that were there went and put a big sign on the two bathrooms, "Out of order." Those people came in, and that's all they wanted to do, is go to the bathroom. They didn't want to buy coffee. They didn't want to do anything else. They weren't even going to, they weren't nasty or anything. They just said, "Oh, well, no flush? We're gone." And that's what happened, and was constant. It was a constant group of people, because the fair said to them, "You can't come in. We're sold out." So there was, there is some sort of a sellout.
We are concerned, and we'll be addressing this at our next meeting.
So my point was, don't come through the town. Come from 495, get off that exit, you go South Carver, start talking to Mr. Deli Pescoli to start parking in there, and I don't know if you can cut a road into the Renaissance from his, that property. You just don't use this area anymore. You just start, you know, reconvening it. That's my point, anyway. But I'll be here.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. We'll move along to our next agenda item, the introduction of our new facilities manager, Mr. John Ball. Mr. Fantasy?
Yes, this is John Ball. He's been hired as a facilities manager. He comes from being a facilities manager at the USS Constitution Museum in Boston. He's had management experience, 11 years in the field. So, and we're happy to have him on board, and welcome.
And I'm happy to be here.
So why don't you tell a little bit about yourself?
So I came from the USS Constitution Museum, Old Ironsides. Before that, I mostly worked in elderly public housing and nursing homes. So I've worked with kind of a lot of different populations, doing a lot of different kind of things. And I'm excited. This is kind of a new position, so I'm excited to kind of see how it grows with me and grow with the town. And I'm just excited to be here.
Okay, so he'll be looking at all the buildings, do a review of the buildings with Dave, and he'll be looking at needs, things that need to be replaced, repaired, and so forth. And he'll be kind of the go-to person for any mechanical or infrastructure issues that we have in town. So we're excited to have you on board. It's a brand-new position. First-time employee as a facilities manager. It'll take some of the pressure off O and M management to give him that work that they've been doing, so they can get to their other work that they have, so.
Wonderful. Well, we're very happy to have you here. Thank you for joining us here in Carver. Any questions, thoughts from the board?
Just welcome to Carver. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks very much for coming in tonight. All right. Moving right along. Next up is an application for a common victual license from Ellen Wilson, DBA Free Rangers Farm on Two Montello Street. Is it Two Montello Street in Plimpton, Mr. Fantasy?
No, it's in Carver.
In Carver, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself.
All right. That's fine. All right. Ms. Wilson, would you like to tell us a little bit about your operation?
Sure. I've been in Plimpton for, I think, seven years now, and almost seven years. And when we moved down here, we started kind of a small family farm, and it grew a lot, and then during COVID, it exploded. And we were selling a lot of Berkshire pork and beef and chicken. And I am also the cook at Independent Fermentation Brewery in Plymouth. And so during the pandemic, we just stayed open outside for 18 months in the parking lot and just, you know, we fed everybody from our farm to table. And I've done a lot of catering and different things around and decided it's time to open a store. I need to get everything out of my house into one place and get out of parking lots and get back inside again. So this space became available, and it's just a perfect space. It's right next to Brewery 44. I do some pop-up work with them. You know, it's right off the highway. It's got free parking. It's got space for trucks to come in in the back. And what I would want to do, you know, when I start, it will be a deli kind of butchery. I'll sell the meat as I do now. I get it all processed in USDA plants. But I sell it frozen now, so you can get a butcher box and things, whatever you'd like. But eventually, you know, I would like it to be that we are being able to cut it here. That's going to require hiring a butcher and a few other things, so. You know, there's just really nothing like it in town. A lot of people raise fantastic produce and meats. And, you know, we're at the point now where I'm getting more and more things from other people as well, instead of just all from my farm. So just something that hopefully can help the community and help me, and you can come eat all my donuts, all of as many as I can for you.
Great. Well, thank you for coming in this evening. There any questions from the board?
When do you hope to open?
Realistically, I think it'll probably be January 1st.
Okay.
I was actually waiting for this meeting to talk to the landlord again, but we were in there yesterday, and, you know, it's a bit of a build-out. But I think realistically, January 1st. And until then, I'll do what I do now still. I have a lot of freezers in my house, which I need out of my house.
All right. Anything else?
Do you have set hours already, or are you?
You know, I'm really trying to figure that out. I think it'll probably be 9:00 to 6:00. But I would rather it be 11:00 to 5:00. I just, I think I have to really kind of work with how it happens, that the hours will kind of happen organically. I'm not going to be a breakfast place. It's not a sit-down place. You come in and get, you know, we'll have a sandwich of the day and pre-made meals, things like that. We'll have coffee, but not, you know, not a sit-down place. So I'm really trying to figure out which days of the week would be best to be closed. Everyone closes Monday and Tuesday. Should I follow suit with that, do Sunday? So I'm kind of, but 9:00 to 6:00 would be the, and no liquor license, so.
All right. Anything else from the board?
So you're looking just up five days a week? Is that what the plan is?
Well, again, I mean, it's going to depend financially. I would, when I've thought about this for years, and when I did it before, and Quincy always had two days off, but things are very expensive these days, and I don't know if taking two days off is going to be, if it's going to be financially possible. So that's, I'm really looking at that right now. You know, it would be great, if it would. But Sunday's a big football day. It's a big family day. So maybe it would be Monday, then that disappoints people, because everyone's closed. So we'll see how it, see who comes in when, and when I think I can.
See how it develops.
Yeah. All right.
Is there a motion from the board?
Make a motion to approve the license request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations. Good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Next up is a discussion with the Redevelopment Authority on Zero-Wave Street. It's a request from the Redevelopment Authority to retain the parcel in their possession. Is there anyone from the Redevelopment Authority that would like to join us up here? Mr. Moore, is there another chair over there for you?
Yes, there is.
Oh, great. I couldn't, thank you. Welcome. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Well, we thank you. I guess I got an early start.
Can you tell us a little bit about this property?
I'll let you open.
Well, you have all the facts. And basically, it's property that is at the end of Wade Street that, when the development was done many years ago, this section of property was set aside by the developers, recreation space.
Mr. Moore, could you just make sure you speak?
Yeah, recreation space for the residents of that new development. And it's kind of been sitting for a long time, and Joanna has all the details on it. But at some point, the property was, the RDA acquired the property in 2009 from the Select Board. And then that deed was recorded in 2010, and then, well, you have it all. You know it all. I'll let Joanna.
Yeah, and I think the Select Board has a timeline.
I was just going to say, Elaine was, we had met earlier, and Elaine was good to photo this whole timeline that I prepared and gave to my committee. She voted it for you people to see and review.
So I guess the question is, why does the Redevelopment Authority want to retain the property?
Well, the actual vote, even though it was taken, was never committed by the Select Board. Time went on. Time went on, and we realized what was going on. And then we kind of pursued and said, "Hey, wait a minute. We still own this. Why don't we just convey this back to the Conservation Committee, create a restriction to preserve the land, the 6.32 acres? There's 131 residents there, and they can use that property." I think also, I became aware of the fact that, adjacent to that, there was acreage that was being sold as conservation. I can't remember the name of the company. And the company, I was told, that was probably wanting to buy that property from the Select Board and probably could reconstruct their conservation planning, and they would use that piece of it, and then they could build more $700,000 homes. Well, this really belongs to the people of Wade Street. It was originally created, Williams Brothers built it way back in the early days. They used that, always the worst, I live on One of Them Shores. It was always the worst piece of property, where they either used it as a dump or whatever. And that basically happened to that area as well. As time went on, people or the redevelopment said, "You know, we should do something with that. We had an idea of planning and putting another park, because we needed more baseball parks." And then makepeace came. And I can tell you this, other than savory, because I'm 2006. I'm a China member of the redevelopment. And so that's really what was getting us going, was the makepeace people. And then the people in Wade Street, such as Brian and those people, realized that they were going to cut through. In that early day, they wanted sand. Our town was selling sand like crazy, right? Okay, they were. That was the thing. Oh, money, money, money. And then when the members, or I should say neighbors, came to tell us what was going on, and the potential makepeace was going to cut a road at the end of Wade Street, right straight through the 6.32 acres, 6.32 acres, and they were going to take that sand, and they were going to sell it. And we said, "Uh-oh, hi, guys. We're done. We're done." And so we pulled the planning board, because we had even gone over to the planning board. We pulled all that. In my timeline, you'll see that Will St. Clair and myself, Will was the chairperson, we came. If you read this, you would have, you can see through what we did, telling them how we wanted to give it back to the town. We didn't want it to be sold, we wanted to give it back to the town. So we came on October 12th, this is the first time, the 2012 October 1st, you'll see if you read through that timeline. And we ourselves, RDA, took a vote to give it back to the town. In October 23rd, 2012, we had a joint meeting with the Select Board. And Helen Morone, then the Select Person, she made a motion to accept both properties. One was Oak Street and the other was Wade Street. Jack Franny was a member then, that would not happen today, but he was a member of our RDA, and he also was a Select Board member. And he had a, he made a motion to put Wade Street on the next meeting, and they accepted.
But the ultimate goal here is for you folks to retain the property and then ultimately convey it to the Conservation Commission. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, so that parcel serves not just Wade Street, but the whole Vaughn Estates down there. So it's quite a lot of people, quite a few residents. And I think there's some potential concern that Joanna raised to me about, you know, if, for example, that neighborhood might need water at some point.
Yeah, that was.
They're going to need a big rate wellhead radius. And 6.32 acres is pretty big.
Okay, yeah, no, I think, I think personally, I think that's a good plan to get that in the hands of the Conservation Commission. Other questions from the board about this property?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little bit confused based on, you're saying that, the way I read this, the Board of Selectmen now own the property, correct?
The Board of Select, the Board of Selectmen voted to.
The town owns it, sorry, Ken.
The Board of Selectmen voted to take the property back, but they never changed the deed. The deed is still to the Redevelopment Authority. So even though the Select Board voted to take it back, they never physically did. So it still belongs on paper to the Redevelopment Authority. So the question really before the board here tonight is, does the Select Board want it back? Or does the Select Board want to leave it to the Redevelopment Authority? It seems to be a piece of property that's just been sitting in flux.
No, and we appreciate you bringing it to us, because I think it needs to get, it needs to get settled. So.
Right.
And my feeling is that it should stay with redevelopment as long as it is put into a conservation restriction.
Yeah, I agree. Anything else from the board?
Well, if it stays with you, when do you plan on putting it in that restriction?
That's an interesting question. Sarah, maybe you can help me on this because of your role in the conservation as the agent. I believe that the Conservation Commission has to accept the property. Is that correct? So it would have to be offered by the Redevelopment Authority, then the Conservation Commission would have to vote on whether to accept the property or not. So.
And then you would have to draw up a conservation restriction.
Right, then we draw up a conservation restriction. Now, this is not, this has not been discussed at all at the conservation, at any Conservation Commission meeting, because it really, you know, depends on what your vote is tonight. So I can't speak for the other members of the Conservation Commission of what their vote would be, but that would be the process that would be followed. So.
Would you, do you guys have a plan to bring it to the Conservation Commission ASAP? Or is it just going to sit around for a while now?
No, it won't sit around, we're meeting November 1st.
Joanna, if you could just speak into the microphone.
Sorry, we're meeting again on November 1st. And so our charge here tonight, as he has said, to go back to our committee and tell them, yes, it's clear, we, the Select Board voted for us to retain that property and to go forward with our plan. And I would tell you, at that point, I will bring it up and say to them, our next step, this is what we need to do, and we'll be doing it, it won't sit around.
I love the idea, and I, I want to see it get to your end goal. If for some reason the Conservation Commission didn't want to accept it, do you have a Plan B to get it to your end goal for the residence use and all the good stuff that you were saying? How could you preserve it for them if the Conservation Commission were to say, no, thanks?
It is already that way. I don't have, if the planning planner was here.
The site, the site plan says recreation.
Says recreation, it's already been defined. Vaughn Estates has already defined that as recreation area, and it should stay that way. It never really should come out.
So it can't be sold like it was going to be?
Well, I guess we could override that, but, you know, we had thought we would, could, we could take it on and sell it. But then, of course, as I told you, that reversed it. But now, as Sarah says, it's on the original document as a recreation, non-buildable lot. I don't have the property card in front of me, but it's non-buildable lot. That's how it's defined on the assessor's card. So it could not be sold for, you know. So what Makepeace was doing, they weren't going to build houses, they were going to take the sand out of there and sell it. That's basically what they were going to be doing.
Because I love what you're trying to do. I, I want it to get there. My fear is that somehow it's going to end up being sold for a nefarious reason.
No.
Not with Joanna on it. Excuse me, Mrs. Layton.
I would agree with that, but I'm still, I think to Jen's point, is right now, we've got a property, is it fair to say it's a limbo?
The property, the property right now is owned by the Redevelopment Authority. But a vote was taken by the Select Board to take, to take ownership of that, that was never fulfilled. So that, that, your vote is still standing. So you could conceivably take, take ownership of that tomorrow because of a vote taken 10 years ago.
So if we did do that, then you could then come to the Select Board with a plan to say, hey, it's going to go into conservation or something else, and we have, I guess, a say, right? But right now, if it goes back to the Redevelopment Authority, I love the idea about the conservation restriction, but all of a sudden, it doesn't happen. And five years from now, or two years from now, there's a whole new board. And that board now wants to go and sell it and do something else with it. We being the Board of Selectmen have lost control, correct?
That would probably be the case, yes, because the ownership would be with the Redevelopment Authority. Now, I don't really see a problem with the Conservation Commission, but it's not a rubber stamp saying that that's exactly what's going to happen. It has to go through the regular process like any other property would have to, that someone wants to donate to the Town of Carver as conservation land.
With your permission. Kathleen O'Donnell sent me an email.
And she's your lawyer?
With your permission, can I read it?
Just into the, into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You need to have another microphone. It states here, and she's saying, if the deed was never recorded, title is still in the RDA. We don't really need the Select Board to rescind its vote by itself. As with all conservation transactions, the deed is accepted by the Concom, and the acceptance is approved by the Select Board. It can just say that it doesn't want the property, and it approves its acceptance by the Concom. So you do have a right, you do have a say, we will come back. Put us on the agenda, we'll come back.
But couldn't we just go the other way and say, come back when you've got a decision from the Conservation Commission to say, hey, we want it, and then we just do it all in one meeting?
We can, I would suggest that's probably the way to go. Good idea.
Make that motion.
I would make a motion to table the decision to transfer Zero Wade Street property back to the Redevelopment Authority.
No, it already belongs to the Redevelopment Authority.
I would make a motion to table the Select Board's decision to, I guess, not own the property, but we don't own it. I don't know what the motion should be.
Mr. Fennessey, do you have a suggestion here?
To rescind your vote.
Yeah, on that date, on the date of October 23rd, 2012.
But if we rescind our vote, then we've given up control. I thought the situation was, we would just table this now until Conservation comes and says, I want it, let's move forward with this, and then we relinquish.
So make a motion to table this until the Conservation Commission discusses and votes on whether they will accept it.
Can I ask a question here?
Otherwise, it will stay with.
If, if the goal of the Select Board, and I think the goal of the RDA as well, if everyone's goal is to get this property to the Conservation Commission to become, to have a conservation restriction, and a vote has already been taken to transfer this property to the Select Board, why can't the Select Board just convey it to the Conservation Commission for that restriction?
Because technically, legally, it's still owned by the RDA. Because a deed was never drawn up and transferred legally.
I understand that, but if, if the concern I'm hearing that, from members of the Select Board, is that somehow that something's going to happen on its way to the Conservation Commission, and the board feels strongly that they want it to go to the Conservation Commission, why can't we just process the deed, whatever, however it needs to be processed, and then as a Select Board, transfer the property to the Conservation Commission?
We can't transfer it because we don't own it. And, and.
Do you want to go?
The RDA owns the property, so they're really here as just a courtesy.
Courtesy of it to have that particular vote, which never was taken, just to verbally say to us, we, we rescind that vote, really, that wasn't taken. According to Kathleen O'Donnell, you really don't have to, but we just want it to have happened so vocally we can say, we went back to the Select Board. They understood what went on and wrong, and they, they have now rescinded that vote. And that would lead us.
Joanna, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think the Select Board, well, I know, because I was there, voted to give it to the RDA, correct?
Oh, way back in the early time, it's the first, very first thing on the timeline.
2009.
We have the deed that was created by the Select Board, given to us through a quick claim deed back in 2009.
So it was the 2012 vote that you rescinded?
That's correct.
Yeah, but I agree with the Chair, not to rescind it. Because then you are, you're not reserving your right in this, in case something does go off the rails at the Conservation.
So what, what would your suggested motion be to get this to the Conservation Commission as quickly as possible?
So I would make a motion to, to present to the Conservation Commission the offer to accept that property with a conservation restriction.
From the RDA.
From the RDA. And then the RDA can come back to the board to advise the board that they accepted it, or the Conservation can.
And then you.
Why are we making a motion to send this to the?
Table it, to.
Oh, to table it until Conservation.
So it stays in your control.
Interesting.
You know, no matter what happens, until, until it comes back.
Mr. Hoffman, I think you have a question.
Sure, why do I have questions? Okay, so presently, the RDA owns this property, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, the Select Board had voted back 2019?
2012. 2009 and 2012.
They voted several times.
Okay, but the deed was never processed.
There was no action taken.
Okay, so in 2019, there was a vote. There was a vote of the members to take action, have the new Wade Street deed created, and filed at the registry and have it secured with the town. What is that vote? That's 2019, so it was only three years ago. Was this brought up again? This is on the first page of the.
During the November 2019, growing concerns came to us about the encroaching.
Right.
That's another, that's what got us to come back, to realize that nothing ever happened. The Select Board never took action.
So on item number 11, right below that? That's the vote I'm referring to, is that because of that encroachment? That the, that the board decided to?
Yeah, that was, that was when we realized that the board had voted to give it to the RDA, but there had been no deed created.
So nothing, has no action, that deed creation was not taken after this vote, 2019 vote then?
It was talked about a lot.
Okay, so nothing, okay, that's where my confusion was, I thought. Because everything was going back to 10 years ago, and then.
Yeah.
So right now, so I guess that's my question that Mark had mentioned as well, if we don't, RDA owns it, that's who the deed is, so why do we have to get involved? Can't the RDA just?
You don't, according to our lawyer, it says the deed was never recorded, so your action never happened, so you never recorded the deed. You were going to accept it, obviously, but there was no action. So the title is still in the RDA. And she's saying, we don't really need the Select Board to rescind it by vote itself. We at the, we on the RDA just openly wanted you to, guys, to know what was wrong, what went on, what happened, and to actually rescind a vote that three times was taken to accept it, just rescind it. And then we're telling you our plan to go to the conservation and to go, to have a conservation restriction.
So I guess my question, what's the difference between us voting to now and this vote on December 3rd, 2019? Basically, that was for the same, correct?
So it's, if I may, so it's the same thing, because in 2019, they never did the deed, drafted the deed to, to put it in the hands of the Select Board. From what Elaine just mentioned, that in 2020, she had sent an email out on Ms. Melonowski's behalf, looking to move that in that direction, and then he left. So it kind of just sat there, and nothing happened.
Okay.
I think that the intent of the RDA and the intent of the Select Board is the same, to get this into conservation. The, right now, the property is owned by the Redevelopment Authority. So if we were to follow the path of maintaining ownership of that and going to the Conservation Commission to see if they will accept the property, there is no extra step that has to be taken. If the, if the Select Board votes to, you know, or revotes, or whatever they need to do, or exercises their right to do this, then you have to go through the whole deed title, registering it with the, you know, the county, and frankly, spending money.
To accomplish the same.
To end at the same place. So.
So I guess my, my other question, so if the board took a vote back in 2019, the vote was approved, just because the deed wasn't created, does that mean that vote never happened?
No, if I may, no, it happened. So you still have the right at any time to, to ask me to prepare a deed for that, that property, and then, then it'll be the town's property. So the, the property is in this flux between the RDA and the Select Board and the town. So, and where does it stand? Right now, legally, it stands with the RDA because there has been no deed done. Sounds funny, Stan. They didn't do the deed. So, so that's where it stands. But at any time, the board, until that deed is changed, the board can say, let's, let's do it. And I think that's what, when you look at this, that is that number 11. Mr. Bellman thought, well, let's, let's get that done. But, you know, again, I think, from what I'm hearing, almost everybody is in agreement that it should have a conservation restriction. And one more thing, on the, on the assessor's card, it says, recreation area for Vaughn Estates. So it's specific to that, that area. So, for recreation, so that's similar to a conservation restriction, so.
And I think it's important that we get it done, let's just, I think our goal is just to figure out the best way to get that done. That's all, and.
So I think this board, since these, these different motions and votes, I think you have to do something to get it to the Conservation Commission. And your board should do the same thing.
We will, yeah.
I think the uncertainty is, we're a little uncertain as to what the appropriate motion should be. And I think that's where the, where it lies.
To table the discussion until Conservation Commission has been presented with the land?
Yeah.
Presented with the, with the.
With the offer of the land.
Offer to seek a conservation restriction on this land.
Can I make a suggestion?
So moved.
I would make a motion to rescind the select person's, all those votes that happened, 1, 2, 3, whatever, to rescind the votes, plural. And the part of that motion would be to ask the redevelopment to come back to them with their plan. If you don't like our plan, you could take it back. But if you like our plan, let us do it, because the accomplish, we're going to accomplish just what you're going to accomplish, and you're going to spend money like, like Savory says. But let us do something, let's right the wrong, that's really what I'm trying to do.
Mr. Fennessey, you're the lawyer here.
So putting on my lawyer hat, you don't want to waive your rights at this point. I appreciate what you're saying, because ultimately, that's what's. I appreciate what you're saying, because ultimately, that's what's going to happen, is what I'm hearing. But you don't want to waive your rights right now by rescinding all your votes, then you've given up everything, so. So you want to hold that in abeyance until they do their deed.
So the motion Ms. Hewens made, could you read that back, that motion?
Motion to table the Select Board's decision until the Conservation Commission votes on the acceptance of the land with a Conservation restriction from the RDA.
Okay, and was there a second on that motion?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Fennessey, is that motion?
That's proper.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the Select Board?
Can we, I think there are a few neighbors here as well. I'd like to hear what they have to say. Is that, can we do that, or is that...
Well, we really should have done that during citizens' participation. But if, I'll, we'll give you an opportunity to speak quickly, if you'd like.
Oh, good. Thank you, thank you. They did get a letter.
But we, we need to, we need to get them a chair and a microphone, so...
I'll just phone chair. We have another neighbor too.
Yep, yep, he can grab a chair. Okay.
Just your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Brian Abatello, 15 Wade Street. I live across from the property. Little history, I've been fighting this fight for 12 years, been sitting on the property for 16, across the street from it. And I like what I hear tonight, because this ball's been on the goal line for all that time, and it's going to be nice to see it finally get moved across, just to use a little sports reference. But, you know, in all fairness, I'm really hoping to see this go to the Conservation, because, you know, it's what we've wanted on the street all this time, and I've watched the volley go back and forth. I was on the RDA. There's all different faces here, except Sarah's. She knows the history, you know, so hopefully, you guys can make this happen, and it would be fantastic to see, you know, this piece of property stay as beautiful as it is and not turn into a sand pit, and all the wildlife and things like that that come crawling out of it and flying out of it can continue to do just that, and we can continue to walk the paths that we've made, you know, over the years in there. So, you know, all I would say is this, do the right thing, which I know you're going to do, and, you know, I'll be here to applaud you all the time at any other meeting.
Thank you.
Christian Chevry, 17 Wade Street. I'm right next to the property that's there. And I second what Brian has to say, I totally agree. My children use that, they walk off into the bog ponds and go fishing. It's a beautiful area, and to have it turned into a sand pit or road going into that way with trucks going there, I would just disagree. So, like what Brian's saying, it definitely needs to get taken care of and wrapped up, so we don't have to worry about that, and I really appreciate that.
Oh, great, thank you. Are there any other neighbors here? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on this. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
One more thing, 94th Street was sold.
All right, thank you.
I'm coming back to tell you how much I'm giving you guys.
All right. Moving right along, next on our agenda this evening is a discussion on affordable housing from Habitat for Humanity. Folks, if you'd like to come up and join us, and just introduce yourself to the folks at home.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Jim Middleton. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat, and here with me is Amy Bellmore.
Yeah, Amy Bellmore, the Director of Development and Outreach for Habitat for, of Humanity of Greater Plymouth.
All right, great, thank you. And this, you're here tonight because the Board is considering different ways to use some of the ARPA money it's received, and one of the things that was suggested was to use some of that money toward affordable housing. We thought we'd have you folks come in and just give us some thoughts. We appreciate you spending some time with us this evening.
Great, thank you. You know, we are, thank you all for your time, and we appreciate it very much. We work in the area of affordable housing, so it is something that we're all committed to. I know that there's a really nice cooperative partnership going on with the Town of Carver, and we appreciate that. But there's a really big need out there for affordable housing, not just in the Town of Carver, but throughout the area, at all levels. Elected officials and people who work on housing have recognized that need. That need really came along even more pronounced way during the coronavirus time, and, you know, people were at home more, their living conditions became more 24 hours a day, seven days a week with the whole family, and the deficits in affordable housing really started to show. And then another factor has come along in the last couple of years. As the market for market rate housing has gone up higher and higher, there's a vacuum at the entry level, and young families starting out and senior citizens are really having a struggle keeping up with what's going on in the housing market. So there's, I think, a real need to, and a time now especially, to try to address affordable housing. In Carver, there's a thing called the subsidized housing inventory, which is a term the state has for their record-keeping, and it connects to the 40B legislation. All towns are supposed to get to 10% affordable housing. The Town of Carver is on that inventory at 3.7%. That leaves a deficit of almost 300 housing units in the town. I think if you all look around, and you all do, I know, look around, you see a lot of opportunities out there that maybe things could be improved, and it's really helpful to the town, it's helpful to neighbors when properties get improved, and it really helps, you know, young folks starting out. We're working on the project connected with veterans, and it's not just veterans, but it's everybody, you know, teachers, healthcare workers, service providers, your folks starting out in the fire department, police department, in-town hall, throughout the community. There's just a need for more affordable housing. So thank you very much for the chance to talk, and I think I'll leave it at that one for now, and let Amy say a few words, too.
Well, I think Jim really covered it, and I'm glad that he mentioned workforce housing too, because that certainly is, you know, a community that has that barrier of reaching affordable homeownership and raising young families. And as you mentioned, the reason, you know, we're having this dialogue tonight is because of those ARPA funds, they really are, this is sort of a once-in-a-lifetime, perhaps, let's hope, at least we don't have another pandemic come along that's going to spur something like ARPA. Not that we don't welcome federal money, but the reason that we have this opportunity and that all municipalities have this opportunity to decide how they want to prioritize their funds is because of the pandemic. And so, as you know, there are, you know, a handful of eligible categories where those funds can be spent, and in our world, where we spend our days trying to figure out the affordable housing problem and finding solutions to it, you know, we welcome these chances to have this kind of dialogue. So happy to answer your questions and continuing the conversation.
Thank you. I just, I know Dan Badger is here in the audience, and I know that he worked very closely with Habitat on the 11 Green Street project, excuse me, as a veteran himself. I was wondering if he could join the discussion, too?
Dan, do you have specific comments? I think this is a Select Board discussion.
But it's about Habitat. I guess what I was hoping to hear was a sense from you folks at Habitat, what your big picture looked like, or what you're hoping your big picture might look like in Carver. You had sent us, some of us at one point, a kind of spreadsheet of, say, building six homes in Carver, what that would cost, where those funds would come from, if you recall that?
Yeah, and I'm sure Jim will jump in here, too. I do want to mention, again, as you likely know, that those ARPA funds are timestamped in terms of when the funds have to be obligated, and when they, any unobligated funds become, you know, can be returned back to the federal government. And so that, when we were first starting this conversation with you all, which was soon after ARPA was announced back in, I think we came, you know, gave you some information in September of 2021, the date at which funds have to be obligated is the end of the year 2024. And then unspent or unobligated funds must be returned or are, could be returned, asked to be returned by the end of the year 2026. So when we talk about six houses, you know, the timeframe has shifted in terms of our production pace. That's all. That's what I'm trying to get to, Sarah.
All right, but before we move forward, you had mentioned Mr. Badger. Mr. Badger, I don't want to keep you here, and this really is a Select Board discussion, but if you have specific information you'd like to give us about how you've worked with Habitat, or how you think that could benefit the town, we certainly give you a couple of minutes to speak about that.
I certainly don't want to distract from Habitat's presentation. The one thing I would, I would mention, and this is perhaps outside the scope of ARPA funds and what, in terms of the timelines that we're talking about, and this is probably a different agenda item for a future Select Board meeting, and that is to talk about the SOP or standard operating procedure in town for how we identify, when we identify properties in relation to the need that's out there with different organizations in town. For example, you have different groups, Recreation, this comes up in open space planning, groups like the COA and things like, they have different needs, and too often, we hear about, "Oh, if we had only known that that property was going to go out for auction," or "That house was going to go out for auction."
That probably is a discussion for another Select Board.
As I just said. Yeah. Yeah. No, that's, that's something that the Select Board, however, has talked about in previous meetings and so forth, but the one thing that is missing is that communication piece, I believe, with different departments in understanding what the different needs are, as opposed to, you know, not realizing that certain agendas have some synergy with one another, had they only communicated with one another, was going to be my only point. But with that, I'll pass it back. Thank you.
Ms. Hewens, did you have any specific questions for Mr. Badger?
No, no, I just wanted him to have an opportunity to say a little bit more about affordable housing in Carver, but since it feels like it's a different discussion, we can have a different agenda.
I will just say, the only, the only thing that I've been involved with is this one pilot program, and as Jim and Amy have mentioned, that this one particular thing is in fact a pilot of a program and one-third of that potential program, so...
And he's talking about 11 Green Street?
Yeah, in terms of not just veteran affordable housing, but affordable housing that can piggyback on existing grants and so forth. And it's, it's something that you can decide when is the most appropriate time to bring that up, but it's one that is a, I would like to see a more proactive measure than a reactive one, in terms of, you know, I always hate finding out about when grants are due, the day after it was due, and/or, you know, with any of these projects, they take time to cultivate, as you know. So, you know, the sooner the discussion can begin, the more foundation, more foundation the town has for making informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if I can just pick up on, I'm sorry, sorry.
No, no.
Okay. When we made our presentation last time, we had a concept in mind. We have not really fully developed that concept. But in the ARPA funding, there's talk about census tracts, and we've also threw up our process of working in partnership with the town and Dan to arrange for 11 Green Street. We've come across a neighborhood stabilization program. So we do know that there is funding out there, and it is a priority. We would be very happy to take this concept further. Our thought was that, we do know there are identified properties in the town that are already clearly identified as potential. We don't know which one of those or which group of those, and I forget the number at the moment, but let's say it's a half dozen properties, and I think it was actually a higher number.
I think it's 26.
26 was on the list, and we were thinking that maybe if there were a dozen properties in there, that we could really focus on that dozen, and out of that dozen, make a timeline to, to carry out projects, develop projects for enough of the units to make a good proposal to actually help the situation with affordable housing in the Town of Carver. And that might be three more houses, it might be six. I would, you know, think that if we could think about a half dozen or eight houses that could come through as finalists, then we could put projects together to carry them out and under the timelines they're involved, as long as we knew that we had, you know, good support from the town and the citizens of the town as well.
Yeah, and to, you know, cobble together other funds, as Jim mentioned, the neighborhood stabilization program through mass housing is, could be a supplemental resource as well. So depending on what the Town of Carver has decided for priorities on your ARPA funds, which I think was about 1.1 at the time, maybe that's changed actually, you know, you might be allocating some to other departments and so forth, but whatever dollar amount the town decides they want to put towards affordable housing, we could, you know, potentially be going out looking for other grants with proper time, you know, time awareness to that process, to piece together the funds that would be necessary to get to three homes or six homes.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, so that was kind of what I really wanted to hear, because I wanted the Board to be sure and understand that if this were to come to pass, you wouldn't be asking for all the money to come from ARPA funding.
We would love that, but I don't think that's an option.
But you probably wouldn't be getting that, so that there would be other sources. I mean, that's very clear. And you had other sources for 11 Green Street as well. I know one of them was our Community Preservation Committee, but there were other sources, so it's not all on the, I just wanted the Board to know that, you know, it's possible for us to use some of our ARPA funding, not all of it, but some of it, and have other sources to come up with half a dozen homes.
Yeah, that Neighborhood Stabilization Program is actually a new one of mass housing, just, we're in the first round of grant awardees, and what's interesting about it is that it is specifically designed for not large developments, for one to four units of housing, so it's not meant for, you know, several dozen or 100 units. So that is something that we could explore again.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, and congratulations to the Town of Carver. You are the only non-urban center that received funding, and that's really an endorsement of this partnership that we've formed, and we look forward to trying to do some more along those lines.
Other, Mr. Carter?
Just a quick question, I think, on the percentage, 3.7, I think you said, that does not include the 55 and over parks or any kind of modular home park that...
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct, yeah, okay.
And then, any idea what the percentage would be if they were counted?
The state doesn't count our manufactured homes.
But you don't have any numbers as to what...
No, I don't have any.
The state will probably never count them.
Okay. Secondly, would be on Green, say, I'm taking an example, Green Street property, and I'm trying to think what happens 20 years from now, meaning now you've got this affordable home, goes to someone at a great price, and now they live there for, say, 20 years. I'm assuming there's some kind of restriction put on the property.
Yeah, there's a deed rider.
So all of a sudden, I turn around and the person lived there for 20 years and wants to sell it for double the value.
They can't, there's an affordable housing restriction that runs with the land.
So when that person wants to go and go through that process, right, they're actually limited, they can't go to a Realtor and like that. Aren't they allowed to get like a certain percentage over their original price?
Exactly. Yeah, it's a deed rider, and what they have to do if they want to try to sell it is to inform the town, and there's an agent, it's called a monitoring agent, typically, we are the monitoring agent, and it goes back in as an affordable unit, and there's a calculation based on what the affordable price is at that time. So they cannot get more back than they've already paid in on their mortgage, so there's no way for them to get the market appreciation on the property.
So once it's affordable, it always stays affordable?
In perpetuity, yeah.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
And I would just say, because of that, in our experience, our Habitat affiliate has never had a Habitat homeowner turn around and sell their home, because they can't buy anything anywhere near what they had. because they can't buy anything anywhere near what they had for the for that value. Unless they had a it hasn't been our experience. But you'd have to have a significant change in your in your own life to be able to then, you know, afford something at market rate.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Other questions? I have a couple of just quick questions. So when you mentioned that you were working with other programs as well and that ARPA funds will only be a percentage of of this, do you have a percentage in mind that from from ARPA? You're talking 50% from ARPA funds or 75% or?
Well, let me let me do some quick math, and I don't remember the spreadsheet that that I sent out or that we put together. But it costs us about $250,000 per home, fully loaded. The materials in 11 11 Green Street, for example, will be maybe 150 to 160.
A one-family home?
That's a one-family, three-bedroom, two-bathroom home. That's our typical family starter home. So if you do the math and we want to end up with six, that's 1.5 million dollars. If we could be thinking in the range of maybe, well, let me do the math on this one. I would say 20, 30% of that, which could be into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. But for us to front load the planning and to go through the process of of evaluating and costing and, you know, all of the things that have to go on pre-development, it would take us probably a couple of years, and it would be an investment of our time and effort, which we are very happy to do. And we're actually with Amy, we're trying to think of ways to do much more housing production. So if that's a range that you all can think about, and if it's too high a range, let us know. And we're happy to see what we can do and put a more focused and comprehensive budget together and bring it back.
So I'm just I'm just thinking off the top of my head here. So correct me if I just want to see if I have the concept right. So you said it's about $250,000 for a standard, single-family.
Correct.
So assuming we we built four of them, that's a million dollars.
Right.
I so you're saying that you would want a 25, 30% commitment of ARPA funds? That's what we would be looking at to build those four houses? Or am I wrong there?
And that's honestly, it's a ballpark number.
Right, no, I understand.
Just thinking off the top of my head and knowing knowing what our history is and what it takes us as as a nonprofit organization to put a project together. And right now, I would say it would be a range that if we if we didn't have see enough money coming from the ARPA funds, then it would make it really difficult for us to pursue a package of six homes. I'd like to keep thinking about.
And does it have to be a package of six or is that just?
No, well, I, you know, we need to make more impact, and that's what we're trying for. So I'd as a proposal, I would like to stick with coming out with six.
I understand.
Also, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I just so my other I'm just I'm using the four because that's a nice, easy number. A million dollars and it's a nice, easy number. So i- i- if the town says, yeah, you know, we think this is a good idea. We need more affordable housing. This is something we want to pursue. We we agree to commit whatever percentage of ARPA money we commit to it. Do we know that at the end of the day, these four houses are going to go to Carver families?
That's not something that can, well, let me put it this way. If we can package this as a one project, DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, says that you cannot do more than 70% of a project as any kind of preference, either a veteran preference or a local preference. So if it's four houses, that's 2.8. Well, it's kind of hard to get that point eight house. So let's say it's two. You know, I think that's those are the kind of numbers we would be able to say can be a preference out of that. If it were six, let's see, that's four. Yeah, we could do four out of six. Could be a preference.
And when it's and just that this is not, I'm not as familiar with this as I am with some other things. So when you say a preference, does that mean it goes to a Carver family? Or does that mean it might go to a Carver family? Sorry?
Oh, yeah. Well, first of all, they have to be income eligible and go through all that process. But we don't Habitat is not required to follow the same exact process that DHCD requires of of market rate 40B projects where they have to put all the names into a hat and and draw from that hat. It's totally blind. Habitat, we're allowed by DHCD, because of our history throughout the state, to look at the need of the family. So we do visits to the family to see how overcrowded, to see how out of code compliance the houses are. So we're allowed to actually do a process where we do a blind description of the of the family to our Board of Directors, and they select. This is a very long answer to your question. The way that the lottery process works is that if there's a preference for veterans or local preference, they go into the hat with the others. But there are more of that preference number with the same name on it in the hat. So the probability of pulling out a local person is higher. But but there's no guarantee all the way along.
And and to Mr. Carter's question earlier about if a property gets transferred for some reason, 20, 25 years down the road, if it's got if a property starts with that local preference, does that local preference stay with the property if it when it transfers at some point?
That's another good good question. I would say that it at the, you know, if it's a Habitat property, we always want to work with our towns. You're you're our host and our sponsor. And we would find every way possible under the existing regulations at that time to to do that.
This is a good, though we might have skipped this early in our introduction in terms of who we serve. So we serve those who are between 30 and 60% income qualified, 30 to 60% of AMI. So that is important. Oh, area median income. Sorry, for so for the family for a family of four right now, a 60 so a family earning 60% of AMI right now is at 84,100 per year for a family of four. So these are numbers that are set by HUD, right?
Yeah, the federal.
The federal government sets these limits and these numbers. And we follow those, as do many others in obviously in the affordable housing industry. So that is one thing that Habitat does not stray from in terms of who is eligible for applying. And then we also look at other living conditions, things like, you know, if they're living in overcrowded conditions or unsafe conditions, unhealthy conditions. And then we kind of look at who who has the most demonstrated need, that kind of thing. So I just wanted to point out the AMI situation.
No, I appreciate you doing that. Any other thoughts, questions from the board?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly add that I haven't spoken to her today, but the last time I did speak to our Assistant Veterans Agent, she said there were quite a few former Carver residents that now aren't Carver residents and who had been homeless and had to find a home in other town because there weren't anything, there wasn't anything available to them in Carver. And it was largely due to COVID. And she was sure she could produce a list of these people. And again, that is a preference that we asked for at the 11 Green Street. You can't be guaranteed to get it, but we did get it. I I believe that's true. And so I just wanted to let people know that a lot of these people might have been Carver residents before, who might be looking for such for an actual new or first home.
Yeah. And also.
Veterans.
Right. And that also just brings rings a bell for me also to mention that we also, these homes are not gifted. They are folks are paying an affordable mortgage with a zero equivalent interest rate. So we do look at work history as well to ensure that they can afford the mortgage as low as it is. It is something that we also look at as part of the application process.
They qualify. They actually qualify for them.
Right, and they can afford that mortgage payment and tax and insurance that they'll be paying over the 30-year term.
Yeah, we 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 actually hold the mortgage. There aren't too many banks out there that want to do a 30-year zero-interest mortgage. If if you take the interest off of of what people are paying for their mortgages, it'll reduce it nowadays by a third, probably, as interest rates work their way up. So, yeah, we're, you know, as we say, we're committed to this. We're we do look for people who pay their bills because and we want them to be working families because we're going to be investing in them at least for 30 years while they're paying off their mortgage. And and then the other part of it is that they do put in sweat equity hours. We ask that any able-bodied adult in the household put in 250 hours working along with everybody else on the project as we we do the rehabilitation in the case of 11 Green Street. So, you know, they they have their own sweat equity in the project as well.
All right. Anything else from the board? Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything?
No, only that I've worked with these two in my past in Kingston, and it's been a great relationship. I'm so happy you're here, both of you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, sir. And and thank you to the board. We appreciate your time and consideration.
Is there anything else you'd like to like to add?
Just that time is of the essence. And if you or some group of you wants to continue the conversations, we're very much open to that. We'll get it. We'll do it right away.
So so you notice what we're doing is we're looking for different ideas on the use of ARPA funds. And I think the goal is to come back to this board sometime in January with some ideas and to make some decisions on how to how to spend or how to allocate that that money.
Just a question, do you have an idea right now of how much funding is still available in in your original amount?
About a million right now.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask you and Jim and Amy if they would be willing to come back to us with a more detailed hypothetical plan for the four of the six houses? Is that something that we could?
Yeah, I think we could. If you want to come back with a more 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 detailed proposal, I think that would be that would be fine.
Sounds great.
Yeah, that sounds great. I think we will start thinking about those other sources too because when it comes to the ARPA process, and you probably know better than than we do, we may have to show that that full budget and all sources committed at the time we move ahead with the project. And so time is of the essence, as Jim mentioned. Yeah.
I think that would help the board decide.
I think it would too. I think it would too. Okay. Last chance. Anyone else? No? All right. Thank you both. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night. We'll look forward to seeing you again. All right. Next up on our agenda is the approval of the ABCC 2023 Seasonal Population Estimate Form. And on the form, they estimate that the population of Carver as of Jan July 10, 2023, will be 11,645 residents. So is there any discussion among the board? Mr. Fantasy, do we need a vote to accept this?
You do.
All right.
To sign it.
I move that we accept our estimated population as of July 10, 2023, at 11,645.
I'll second that.
All right. Mr. Fantasy, quick question. Does this population number tie into any of the services or anything like that that we use?
It comes from the census, I think.
Yeah. And what's the use of this?
Yeah.
It's I think so they can see how many licenses they would allocate to the town of Carver.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just wanted to ask that for the folks at home. All right.
So this is strictly for the alcoholic beverage commission, right? So so many licenses per resident type thing. So it's not, nothing else is used?
Yeah, that well, that was that was my question. They're not using it for anything else.
No, just for that. Yeah.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Our Town Administrator Update, Mr. Fantasy.
Are you skipping something?
Am I skipping something?
Financial management.
Yes, I am. I'm sorry. Next up is a discussion and possible vote on our financial management plan. We are absolutely skipping something. I skipped two far ahead of my computer here. So this is something that came from our Select Board Goals and Objectives and was one of my goals. I think it was other folks as well. So I think everybody has the financial management policies, which as printed, I actually think they're they're very good, and they've helped us a lot with our bond rating and and other things. What I thought was missing, and I I asked Ms. Weston earlier to print it out and leave a copy for all of you here, and I think you have them, are the the dates that that go along with these financial plan management policies. And I know, Mr. Fantasy, at our last meeting, I think during your Town Administrator Update, you you gave us some of the dates that you were thinking of for various budget deadlines, and they were very aggressive. And and thank you for doing that.
I brought it back a little bit on that, only because of the vacations that, you know, Department Eds have and so forth. So it kind of slowed things down a little bit.
And we all understand that things happen. But I think as important as the financial management policies are, I think the dates are important as well because especially during the last couple of years, there's been a lot of change over in Carver. We've gone through several different town administrators, different different folks in the financial department. And and some of these deadlines have sort of fallen back a little bit. But I think it's I think it's important. It's important to me. It was important to me when I was on the Finance Committee that we include some of these dates in our financial management policies because I think these it's important that we hit these dates. And that was one of the things that was important to me. Also, the other thing I think is important, and I've talked to Mrs. Mokwen about this several times, is that we consider adding something to our financial management policies where on an annual basis, we we sweep our budget so that we we recognize prior to town meeting if there's any money sitting around somewhere in a in a budget or maybe an old budget item that we haven't spent. And we need to, you know, let's capture that money, bring it back and and reallocate it in a way that benefits the town. And so personally, for me, I'd like to see something like that included in our financial management policies as well. So those are my thoughts, and that's why I wanted it to to be on our agenda. And I guess I'm interested in hearing other thoughts from from the board or Mr. Fantasy yourself, if you have if you have thoughts on this.
So if I may, on this this little chart.
Yeah.
So the this is from FY '19, we're obviously going into FY '24.
Yeah, I think this was just the last. I I I thought they were these were actually on our on the webpage with the financial management policies, but I couldn't find them.
No, okay.
So.
So on the the step one, we propose that the September 1 to October 31st, so those two months would be the period where we would put that together. We've we've come to the point where we're two-thirds away done on that. The last department meetings are on Tuesday, I believe, from next week.
Okay. And are you are you proposing that for FY for the next budget? Are you proposing?
Well, for the budget, we're we're preparing for FY '24.
Okay. All right. So so again.
So instead, because that doesn't really change the other lines, the bottom lines on on step two, three, and four.
Right, right.
It just gives a little more time for the Department Eds to put there.
September 1st and October 30.
31st.
31st. Thank you.
So the the two months in that that window. Now, do you want to go over this a little bit? Real quick, I'll just give you.
Yeah, sure.
So Draft Budget Policy Report, the second little box, Forecast Projective Funds Available. So we did that. And the projected funds available for FY '24 is $43,23,390. So that's up about, I think it was about 200,000, maybe, on the other. Oh, I had that on another piece of paper, but I think it's 200,000.
Okay.
Established Town School Budget allocations. If you remember, and this has to be changed because this still has, on the financial policies, the number seven, it still has the schools taking 69.68.
Right.
Last year, we reduced that to 67.5, and that's what we'll be doing again this year.
So 67.5 and?
And 32.5.
Yep. Okay.
The second step, the one one issue is is the first bullet, School Completes District Budget. And as you know, the schools generally don't do that until well after February 1st because they have to get the state state. because they have to get the state state um monies in to see what it is before they finalize the budget. So that's not going to be done. So I don't know if that's uh having that in there like that, it that that always be in violation uh because it never happens. So you may want to uh change that and.
Well, this is just, this is a a policy, though. This is not a a a bylaw.
No, okay, yeah.
You're not really violating something, I mean.
Okay.
Right, it's just a it's a goal. I think it's a it's a goal, so we hopefully can move the budget process along as quickly as possible, I think.
Um, and one other thing, just that I think um on the stabilization. So our stabilization right now is three million two eighty-four oh sixty-three. But that's about four hundred thousand below the guidelines for F Y twenty-four. So we would either take that money out of free cash to supplement the stabilization, to bring it up for the guidelines of um number four, town will maintain a general stabilization fund. Uh, it shall strive to maintain a balance of seven point five of the town's annual revenue.
Right.
Okay, so we'd have to bring that up a little bit, about four hundred thousand.
Right.
And it doesn't mean it has to be brought up in that one year, but you can move to to bring it up um to that point.
Right, again, it's 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 a it's a goal, but I think it's an important one.
It is.
And our auditors have always said when they've come in, they've always talked about the stabilization fund and.
It helps our bond rating, you know, it's.
That's that's right. So, okay.
Yep, so.
All right, your thoughts from the board?
Um, on just the calendar of dates or?
Well, on the on the whole thing, on the whole on the whole thing.
Well, I think that to read out your point is you're having, I mean, again, this is something that seemed to work. I believe the school did give budget information by these deadlines, but it just wasn't firm. It was.
Yeah, it's it's a it's a moving target.
Yeah, they they had level one, level two funding back in the day, but yeah, so. Um, I I just think you need to, you know, be reflective of of this of the change in the staff that you have right now. You know, the guideline is to meet the March sixth date. So
Yep.
you know, if you need to massage some of these numbers, let's talk, you know, it's not right now, when you when you when you can. If you think these are manageable, let's let's stick with them, but if you think that some of them.
Sorry, John, I can't hear you.
If you think some of these dates have changed, just um, you know, let us know.
Yep.
Uh, back on the policies themselves. Well, can't change it now, but one uh item number nine, that seems to be um near and dear to a lot of taxpayers' hearts, which is basically saying, hey, we raised the levy limit at two and a half percent every single year. This states that once we hit du- a bond rating of of double A plus um or higher, but then we had we fund the unfunded liabilities for O P E B and and whatnot. That seems to be an unreachable goal. You know, I last at the audit was like thirty-five million, thirty-seven million dollars. So I think that I don't know what the answer might be, but we should look at amending that as a more reasonable target um that's achievable. It's all again.
But is as far as the rest of these financial management policies, you're you're good with those?
Yep.
All right. Anyone else on these?
Well, I guess when I looked at it, the part F, the tax agreements for personal property, solar farms, do you know how much is being brought in on solar annually?
Not offhand, no.
Okay.
But it's a substantial amount right now. We have a number of solar pilots that are bringing in.
Yeah, well, I.
And and I believe at the meeting, the first meeting was brought up, I think Tom had that number.
I don't remember.
I don't either. I remember that coming up, but.
I know with so many coming in, I don't know, looking at it, I think I would like to see the money divvied up into different places with with so many more coming online. I think it's I think the reasoning behind, you know, divvying it up is is smart, knowing that it's, you know, considered one-time sources and not reoccurring because they have a defined termination date. And I've I've been brainstorming. I'm still brainstorming what I think would be a more preferable place to put the money, but um I'm not there yet, but I don't really love the categories that it's put in.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and that might be something that the board may want to tweak.
Yeah, at some point, we could we could always put this on that part F on a future agenda to to to.
Good point, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, do you know what caused the the stabilization fund to be four hundred thousand under what it should be?
Just uh our annual budget going up every year.
Okay.
So and and it hadn't been replenished to that level each year. So I think last year was about two hundred, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand the year prior. Nothing was put in, so.
Okay.
And again, I think part of that is there's been so much turnover
Mm-hmm.
in town that probably haven't, you know, been able to track that as well as we could. You know, with the not turnover, not just in town administrator, but down in the finance department, it's been a been a tough couple of years. That's why I thought it was important that we all get together and revisit these now that things are a little more settled here in Town Hall. And and would the board be uh acceptable? I know Ms. Mokwen is is in favor of adding something to these financial management policies, that we do an a a manual sweep of the budgets and and try to identify any any monies that maybe are sitting out there unused.
But isn't that already an exercise of free cash to go through?
Well, it it can be. I mean, a lot of times, uh, they sit there because either there might be something that might come up on, say, a building or or uh some purchase um from an article, a town meeting article, that used nine-tenths of it, but it's still sitting there.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So it what do you say is it's sweep all those out every year so that they're not sitting there?
Yeah, and what I'm saying is it should be part of our policies.
Just a routine, yeah.
That ha- happens on an annual basis. It doesn't just happen when we ask for it or somebody was looking for it, but we should do it on a regular basis to check and see if there's any money that we can bring back into the budget and and reallocate.
Got it.
Yep.
So that has to be written? That's not automatically done? I know last year we were in, we found a lot when we were going through that whole free cash.
Um, no, it hasn't been done. And generally, I don't want to say generally isn't done every year because there's that feeling of, well, in case we need it, it's there to balance the budget at the end of the year or something. But I I agree. I think it's something that when they sit there like that, the public, you know, looks at that as like a slush fund. Like, it's just sitting there, you know, and then when you want it, oh, you always find it, so. So I think it's a good idea to for transparency too, to have a year. This is what was allocated. This is what we used. Now this is left over. Now we're putting it back in.
I think transparency is the act, the ideal word, and that was my thoughts in including something like that in here is that don't want people to think that you're, you know, storing money somewhere for a rainy day.
Yeah.
We already have, we have our rainy day fund.
Yeah.
So.
To gain a motion?
So you wanna?
I think so. Yeah, I would appreciate a motion.
Okay, so, sorry, one couple more questions, sorry. Um, on getting back to the uh the tax agreements, uh, because there will be a a crucial funding mech- mechanism going forward. Typically, the pilot programs, but are they all payment in lieu of tax programs?
Generally, that's what they seek is a pilot.
Because so 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 there there's never any abatement to any of these, meaning that once it once it was signed, it's done, it never changes. Is that a true statement?
The reason we did that originally, John, was because I think we were afraid that um the state would start saying, well, you can't tax solar projects. They they want solar projects so badly that, oh, now we're going to decide you can't do it. So having it be a a payment in lieu of taxes and having it be that one time, um, be- because if it were taxes, the project, every everything depreciates over time, so having that money.
And generally, it's the same amount per year for twenty years.
I a hundred percent agree with payment of taxes.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm just, uh, I thought I saw numbers fluctuating at one particular point in time, and I was concerned about abatements.
So, if I may, um, early on, uh, the pilots that were written were not written very well. And we entered into the some we're trying to renegotiate right now to change into a standard one that the town will have. We have new council for um for pilots. Um, that's all they do. And they have and they know how to work these for the best benefit for the towns. So I think we're going to see some changes in the forms that we use and in the agreements that we make, which will take care of those issues of, you know, is it going to go down? Is it gonna, can they can they abate it? What can what can happen? So so these are more ironclad, the ones that we're developing now.
But as of right now, no, there's no set rate. There's no
No set rate.
standard.
It's they come in and make a proposal.
Yeah, they can negotiate a different rate with us than they do Plymouth. It's all kind of song and dance right now.
And again, if I may, so what what they what we'll do is have for so many kilowatt hours of of solar is it's this amount.
Lockdown rate, yeah.
This amount for the bigger ones, and the next size, it's this amount, so. So they'll all be on the same because they're all trying to undercut each other to, you know, and get the best deal. I guess that's what they should be doing, I guess.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Mr. English, did you have a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion. Um, Mr. Fantasy can correct it.
To sweep.
To uh I make a motion that we do an annual sweep of the budgets to see if there's unused money from one account or department and that that money be deposited in the general fund. No, yes?
Not not unused um money in a in a count. How did you say it?
Money.
It's getting late.
I know, um, money in in any account, I guess.
So, yeah, um.
Maybe it's I should.
Unused, yeah, unused.
Unused funds.
Funds.
But but they're allocated for a certain project.
Yeah, or, yeah, I don't, I don't know, maybe we should think of language.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we, while we do it, we'll do it the next meeting, yeah.
It's a good idea.
And and if you could, could you just um the the just just take a look at the 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 dates? And and let's put some dates together that we could get up on the on on the select board, uh, financial management policies as well, so people can see the dates that we're looking to to have things done by.
Okay.
Because there's nothing, nothing there right now. Does anyone else have anything on these financial management policies? Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry, one quick thing. We we looked at the operating um calendar, but you're fine with the capital as well, capital outlay calendar?
Uh, same thing. I would change that to because they file them together, uh, the the both the outlay. Um, also, just we're very close to certifying the the free cash um early, this early, thank thankfully, and it'll be somewhere, give or take, and around two point two million. So it's a a a healthy amount. It's down a little from last year. I think it was two point eight last year, this past year, so.
Still a very healthy amount, though.
It is. Uh, you know, I I remember some years when it was, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand, not here, but in other towns that I worked, so.
All right. Okay. Thank you. All right, next up. Now, we are on to the town administrator update.
Oh, I thought I just did that. See, I've been talking a lot.
Perhaps you did.
Okay, so um just a few things, three things. Um, the first is that we had our first Opera Fund Advisory Committee meeting on October sixth. Uh, the committee's made up of Beth Solga from the Finance Committee, Sarah and Mark from the Select Board, Scott Neef from the Schools, uh, Steve Mahoney from I T, Sue Mokwen, the Finance Director, Dave Seidenthal, Operations Management Director, Chief Weston of the Fire Department, and myself. And at the first meeting, we kind of went over all the parameters and what we would be looking at. Um, some of the things we looked at was other towns, you know, how they use their funds and getting ideas that way. Um, a number of ideas are brought up at the meeting of potential uses of of the funds. Um, it's it's generally, um, the the committee really wants to look at everything and then then decide, bring everything that we come up with to the select board. And ultimately, it'll be a select board voting on what to utilize these funds for. So it was a good meeting, uh, and, you know, the next meeting, the target date is um October twenty-seventh at three o'clock, but I'll send out a an email to that. Second thing, the Council on Aging, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has awarded a budget earmark to the Carver Council of Aging of thirty thousand dollars to be expended in quote enhanced services at the council, at the Carver Council of Aging. So I I think thanks go out to Representative Gifford and and Senator Pacico for pushing that.
If I'm not mistaken, it's an additional thirty thousand.
That's right.
They had already received twenty thousand. That's an additional thirty thousand.
Yep, so. And the third, uh, the community involvement, we had talked about that at the um one of our meetings and and even in goals and objectives and things. So we had put out in the COA, um, in their newsletter has about the committees that are available, you know, putting out there how how they how they can access the list and and make an application. So that's in their newsletter, and that you you think, well, it just goes to those seniors, but it really doesn't. It goes, there's, um, let me see the numbers here. Eight he- eight hundred and seventy-seven newsletters are mailed out, six hundred and three are emailed out, and three hundred and twenty are distributed to our senior villages, the library, the town hall, Shaw's supermarket, all the banks, churches, the doctors' offices, the food pantry, and the gatter buses. So it's out there, so somebody can grab one and see it, and they can see this uh this um notification of how to become a volunteer for the town. And that's what we're kind of using that language too, to volunteer, rather than, you know, appointment. It's, you know, it sounds sounds more exciting, that I'm going to volunteer my time, you know, and give back to the town, so. Um, so additionally, the flyer listing the volunteer opportunities along with the application was sent to South Meadow, uh, senior, South Meadow Village for their newsletter, so they'll be putting that in theirs. Uh, the library is placing it on their website. They will advertise the the openings um under Library News. It's also on our website, the town's Facebook page, and the Facebook group called Carver Helping Carver. And finally, um, this December, we're going to put a flyer in the tax bills that will have in the front, um, I think I have a copy here. Right, oh, so on the front, it'll have a picture of our website front page with the big arrow, oops, I'm sorry, the big arrow down there to point to where you click. And on the back, it has the application for to apply for. And interestingly, today, I received a a an application for a woman who wants to be on the Commission for Disability. So and and we need need people on that, um, so thankfully, you know, it's getting out there. So hopefully, by doing all this outreach, we'll get more hits um from people. We'll see.
No, and tha- thank you. Thank you and and Mrs. Weston. I know you both put a lot of effort into that, and uh it's a really nice synopsis of what some of the different boards and committees do, so so thank you for putting that
Yeah, thank you.
that together.
We did a lot of that, so.
Hopefully, we we will get some some new new folks to volunteer for our committees because uh we need new new people, so. All right, anything? Any members of the board on that? All right.
One question. Is it, is there another opening on the Finance Committee?
There's there's always multiple openings.
Oh, but is there another?
Never had, yeah.
There's another one?
Yep, they've never had not openings, since from what I understand, for years, so.
It's a big board. They have, what, eleven? They can have eleven members, I think.
Which is the biggest that I know of any, really any towns.
Okay.
All right. So moving right along, uh, let's see, the approval of the minutes of October sixth, twenty twenty-two.
A move we approve the minutes of ten, six, twenty-two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Two extensions, so three, three zero. Uh, let's see, and then the approval of the executive session minutes of ten, six, twenty-two, and not for release.
Move we approve the executive session minutes of ten, six, twenty-two, and not for public release.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
Two extensions, yes.
Yep.
All right. We have request multiple repress for one-day uh licenses from RTJ Concessions, uh, Edoville uh from two P M to eight-thirty P M for the following dates, uh, in November, uh, November tenth, eleven. uh, from two PM to eight-thirty PM for the following dates, uh, in November, uh, November tenth, eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh. In December, the first, second, third, the fourth, the eighth, the ninth, the tenth, the eleventh, the fifteenth, the sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-ninth, and thirty-first, and January first, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
I think a motion to approve those dates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman's going to recuse myself from that vote.
All right, thank you. All right, all in favor? Aye, opposed? It is unanimous with one recusal. Thank you. All right. Our next meeting is on, uh, uh, November first, twenty twenty-two, and it seems like select board community announcements somehow get left off this, the agenda, but we always have select board of community announcements, so we'll, we'll go around the, uh, go around the table. So, Mr. Hoffman, would you like to start us off?
I just wanted to, um, on behalf of the select board and, and others in town, our, um, send our condolences to the LaFountain family on Jody's recent passing. I think most of us have seen that her battle with cancer, she lost it last week. So I just wanted to know that the, uh, her family, that our thoughts and prayers with them.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
And thank you. I know it's a little early, but I do want to encourage people to please vote, um, on or before November eighth. It's very important.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Uh, I'm, I'm all set.
All right.
None tonight.
All right, uh, I just have a, a couple of things. Um, I've heard from the, uh, the state that we're finally getting close to the point of, uh, the dedication of the Rochester Road Bridge. Uh, it's been a long time coming, so, uh, hopefully, we'll have a date very soon, and Mr. Fantasy will, will share that with everybody. And then I just wanted to reach out and just really thank our, our police officers and all our public safety officials on all the work they've done down at King Ridge and Sphere over the last few weeks, because I know it's been a real challenge and, um, on a, on a number of levels. And everybody's trying very hard down there, and, um, I just think we are very lucky to have the, uh, the public safety officials we have. That's all, cause they're working extremely hard down there, so thank you. And, uh, with that.
Well, can I say one thing?
Absolutely.
You know, I'm not a board member, but, um, just in doing the, uh, budget today for the veteran services, they do have a gift account, veteran services, and they're looking for donations, if anybody wants to make a donation to the veterans, uh, it would be used for the veterans in, in any kind of emergency situations that they come up with. So you can always make a donation through the veteran services here in town hall.
That, that's great to know. Maybe we could get that up on our, on our website as well?
Yeah, and they, they put it on their website, and I think it attaches to us at some, some way, but. Yep, thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.